Oh yeah. Time being six sixteen, I call to order the City of Glenwood Springs Regular City Council Meeting. It is March sixth, two thousand twenty five. And Ryan, would you please take roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Dane.
Here.
Councillor Zelinski, Councillor Wymer.
Here.
Councillor Shakhtar. Councillor Sims. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you, Ryan. Moving on, item six, agenda changes and conflict of interests. Anybody have either to report? Seen on moving on, we'll go to council announcements. Again, announcements? No. Excellent, moving on. Item eight, as always, the citizens appearing before council for items that are not on the agenda. So if you're here tonight to give us your two, two minutes or three minutes.
We have one John Haynes.
We have one John Haynes, then please, John Haynes, come up, state your name and whether you live in city limits or not.
How are you? Something like this. My name's John Haynes. I have property in the city. I don't happen to live in the city. If I did live in the city, I might be where you guys are, but can't do that living in the county. So I have a property manager who takes care of some of these pieces of property. And it appears that the water prices have gone up practically double. And I'm really puzzled because I've been paying the old rate for twenty five years and I wonder what I did to cause rate increase. And that's what my question is.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's it?
That's it? No, no, there might be more. Um, so.
Give me an answer.
Matt Langhorst will.
He will?
Yes.
Go talk to Matt.
Sorry, Matt, but I assume you would.
I've just been dealing with them one at a time. So if you want to give me an address and all the other fun things, we can talk about it.
I don't need to give you an address. They're all the same, except rumor has it that it's.
Yeah, so thanks. Thanks, John. Thanks for bringing this to our attention. And if you could please ask Matt about why and how, you'll get your answer.
New buildings aren't paying their fair work. They're fair share. So the old folks got paid for the new ones.
No, that's not, that's wrong. That is not the case. Matt, Matt will have the correct answer for you. Yes, it is. Anybody else would like to speak in front of us tonight?
What?
He was.
I just got.
After consent.
Yeah, are you, are you here for items that are not on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay, please. Okay, please come forward, state your name and whether you live in the city or not.
My name is Barbara Boils. I have an apartment building ten twenty-three and a half Grand Avenue. I've had since two thousand ten. And I live in Elgerbell now.
Thank you.
And I've been, I've learned about what happened with the four hundred unit apartment by Target. And that the water bills are gonna go. Is that not true?
I'm, I'm not sure what you heard, but I'm not sure we've heard it.
It was something about, I don't have the exact details. I wish I did. But that there's a building, a big four hundred unit apartment building out by Target and Lowe's. And the, the water prices supposedly were gonna set, be set for the rest of us in the same amounts.
So, so that sounds exactly like the last rumor we just heard.
Oh, it does?
Yes. And, and from what I know, and I'm just speaking for myself, I have not heard any of this. And it sounds like a, a really, really big rumor. But, but again, I'm gonna have to defer you to Matt Langhorst, who, who has the ins and outs. Yes, that would be Matt. And maybe, maybe Matt, this is, this is not usually how we do this, but maybe you can give a little insight on this.
So the water rates were set off of meters. And a meter is a three quarter, one inch, whatever it is, you get a service charge for that. Anything behind the meter, if it's a single family home, there's nothing behind it. If it's an apartment, you get charged a half again for a service charge on top of the regular service charge because you're not a single family home. You're an apartment. So that's how we rounded in all of the apartments that are being built. So what the problem we're finding is, it's not even a problem, actually, to be honest with you. What we're finding is, is that the apartments that are two, three, six, eight, those kinds of things, one, they're paying those service charges. Two, the bigger problem I find is, is they're using a horrendous amount of water. So an apartment should be about half the use because it's a half of an EQR. When we bill it out for service or for the improvement fees, it should be about half the use of a single family home. A single family home is thirty-five hundred gallons a month. Some of these apartments are using five, six, some of the trailers we're finding are using ten thousand gallons of water a month. So yes, the service charges are a little bit higher. If you actually use the appropriate amount of water that those should be billed for, the bill did go up, but it should be somewhere between ten and about fifteen percent. The things for like John, I already did the assessment on those two addresses for his property manager, basically. They're using so much water that the bill is going up a horrendous amount because you're being billed for the water. And it's actually a lower rate for the first two tiers than it used to be. But you're also being billed for sewer. The eighty-three dollars used to have ten thousand gallons of sewer baked into it. And this doesn't, it just says it's fifty bucks, which is what it used to be. And you're paying for the volume of water you use it in the winter time, which is going to the sewer. So you're paying eighty thirty-five for a thousand gallons of water, basically sewer. So what we're finding is, is there are some places that are using five, sixfold of the water they should be. I don't know if it's a leaky toilet. I don't know if it's the tenants themselves are using too much water. I don't really know what it is at this moment, but we're working through those things to try to help the consumer.
Yeah, it's fine. It's all good.
It's the, we're trying to figure out what's going on in each one of these situations. And I've got like two or three trailer parks. We have three or four apartment complexes. But in reality, the extra half a service charge for the units behind it is a little bit of an increase. Yes, that is. They were being billed for twenty-five years as a single family home. But as a single family home using thirty-five hundred gallons of water in these places are in the exact same footprint as a single family home, but they're using four or five times as much. So as we said, when it's, we're billing off of volumetric use and if you're more impactful to the system, you will get charged more. Obviously, five apartments and a thousand square feet is going to use more water than a single family homes. It really probably shouldn't use a ton more, but a lot of them are.
Right.
So mine has gone from three hundred a month to seven fifty.
So, so let's do this. Let, let's, let's do this. Thank you for bringing this forward. He's the guy with the information. He will, he will get you everything you need to know and squared you, squared it squared away. So you understand it because we did change the structure on, on how we build for water and, and he has all the answers. I'm gonna have to refer you to him, please. So if you guys could figure this out, just so we can keep time and keep moving on. But thank you, Matt, for all your info and thanks for coming forward. Anybody else here that'd like to get their three minutes? Anybody online? I see none. Great. So we'll close the public portion for citizens appearing before council and we'll let's see, entertain a motion on the consent agenda tonight, item number nine. Well, all right, let's see what we can do. Councillor Zelinski, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
Oh, I gotta look at this. Do it again, please. My second emotion and the second from councillor Shakhtar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? We'll see none. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Then item ten is a proclamation for National Red Cross Month. And that means I have to stand up. Oh, I can't go that way.
I'm coming to meet you.
However, we're gonna do this. Maybe you come up right here. Certainly happy, you know, cameras and all that stuff.
Awesome.
All right. Okay, stop. So bear with me, this is my second. And then we have the microphone. There you go. Hello, I have no idea who you are, but thank you for being here.
Just say, I'm Jackie Whitsit.
Pleasure to meet you. I'm Marco. And I'm gonna read the proclamation for you. A proclamation for American Red Cross Month, March two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross in eighteen eighty-one and a hundred and twenty-five years after receiving their first congressional charter, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis. Whereas nationwide, over sixty-eight percent of Red Cross employees and sixty-five percent of Red Cross volunteers are female. Whereas the Red Cross provides more than forty percent of blood products in the United States. Whereas their voluntary and generous contribution shine a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours. Whether it's delivering shelter, food and comfort during disasters, supporting service members, veterans and their families, or saving lives with first aid, CPR, AED and other skills. Whereas this work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it's needed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Marco Dane, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Glenwood Springs, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby formally designate March as Red Cross Month. And witness hereof, whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cast the seal of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado to be affixed this sixth day of March in the year two thousand twenty-five. Marco Dane, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Glenwood Springs.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Is somebody taking a picture? Because Red Cross really.
Brian is so, let's do, this is for the.
Nice. There you go. How's this? We good? I can only smile so long, right?
Jackie, thank you so much. Absolutely. I give you this. I'm gonna sit back down and if you have something to say, please go for it. Want to be at the podium so we hear a microphone? Or do you want to do this?
I can do it right here. Okay. I just wanted to say thank you very much for letting the Red Cross come in here for the recognition of Red Cross Month. A national tradition that began in March of nineteen forty-three, when President Franklin D. Roosevelt issued the first Red Cross Month proclamation. And each US president has followed ever since. During March, we celebrate and honor local community heroes who help ensure their neighbors never face crisis alone. This is made possible by local staff, fifty-five volunteers in the Roaring Fork Valley area who have dedicated thousands of hours of service in the last year. This includes responding to eleven home fires, assisting thirteen families, installing seventy-one smoke alarms and making forty-six households safer. The Red Cross is proud to be part of this community. And we thank you again for the opportunity to recognize and celebrate our amazing local volunteers who turn passion, who turn, turn compassion into action every day. And we are always, always looking for more volunteers, both locally. And as you know, the national disaster scene has become ridiculous. I, I, I only deployed once. I went to North Carolina. And it's, it's just like one after another, after another. So if, you know, I got to say my little spiel for more volunteers. So thank you so much. Um. Okay, all right. I, you can go to one eight hundred Red Cross. That is how you get every bit of information about the Red Cross, or you can call me. Just kidding. Um, I actually. I don't know if it was clear in the proclamation, but ninety percent of Red Cross workers are unpaid. And they work from home, basically, and show up for crisis. And I teach also CPR and AED and put in fire alarms and anyway, but thank you so much for your time. I'm happy to be here. I haven't set foot in a council room since I retired from mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Sorry about this.
This guy was great to me. You have a good one.
Because he's fantastic. Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to council for your comments. Uh, this moves us on into actions and our presentations for tonight. And item eleven is the award of Lincoln Wood Drive roadway and storm sewer replacement request for proposal. And is that you or?
Yeah, I can take that one. So I don't think this needs any discussion. This was on the consent agenda, but you guys asked that anything that's paid for from two A money be, uh, you know, put on the regular agenda. So that's why it's on there.
Thank you, Steve. Any comments from council? Just want to point out this was two A money. That means this is our new street tax money in action, which is great to hear. Thank you. Next, item twelve. We have to move in this?
Yeah.
I didn't know we had to move, we had to approve RFPs, but we can do that. I'm entertaining a motion, item eleven, to approve the RFP. Oh yeah, that again. Councillor Shakhtar.
In the Mayor Pro Tem.
So I will turn the mic on.
Oh, yeah.
Be a green light.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I would move that we move forward and award to Lincolnwood Drive roadway and storm sewer replacement request for proposal, RFP two thousand twenty-five zero three P.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I second.
And a second by councillor Zelinski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? We'll see none. So the motion passes unanimously. Excellent. Thank you for pointing out that we needed a motion. Yep, thank you. Um, item twelve, Roaring Fork Valley Wildfire Collaborative. And I see a couple of people here, maybe? Yeah, excellent. Please state your name so we know who you are.
Hey, I'm Angie Toddland. I'm the executive director of the Roaring Fork Valley Wildfire Collaborative.
Thank you.
I'm Kevin Warner. I work for the White River National Forest, the district ranger on the Aspen so far.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Perfect. I'm gonna talk for just a few minutes. And then I mentioned over to Kevin, I can spin at Cheryl a little bit more. Kevin, in so many ways, is the founder of the wildfire collaborative. And I get the honor of running it. So as you probably know very well, the Roaring Fork Valley is, thank you, a wildfire corridor facing a critical threat that gets worse every year. Every year, fires get hotter, larger, more devastating, more costlier. And we're certainly not immune here. This is a, a map showing wildfire intensity or fire intensity, I should say, from the Colorado wildfire risk viewer, which is from our friends over at the State Forest Service. Um, this is the boundaries of the Glenwood Springs Fire Department for the recent CWPP that they're doing. And as you can see, it's pretty alarming. We have seen fires in the valley before. This is the Lake Christine Fire. This is the Glenwood Canyon Fire. And certainly they're a part of our life. They're a part of the ecology of the forest and we'll see them again. The other piece that we consider is that the Roaring Fork Valley is pretty darn immune or pretty darn susceptible to the post-fire hazards, all of the things that happen after a wildfire comes through from flooding to mudslides. Um, this is the state's post-fire susceptibility analysis. And you can see our watershed there in blue. Um, and aside from the front range, we're one of the additional areas that is pretty high risk. So that's where the Roaring Fork Valley Wildfire Collaborative comes in. Um, we really promote the idea of wildfire resilience. We know that wildfires are a way of life here. And our job is to reduce their destructive consequences. We have two core strategies. We spend a good deal of time and energy on landscape scale mitigation. So large-scale cross-boundary multi-partner fire breaks and forest thinning projects largely in the wilderness. And then we also spend a good deal of time working directly with community members and homeowners to help them harden their homes from embers and, and manage vegetation. To do this, we really lean into cross-sector partnership. And this is just a short list of some of the entities that come together very regularly to collaborate on this work, um, which includes all of the counties, all the municipalities, all the fire districts, and then our government partners from the US Forest Service, the State Forest Service, the BLM, and so on. We exist on a collaborative funding model. So we count on contributions from the counties, the fire districts and the municipalities to run our operations. Um, and we're, we're pretty lean and efficient. Um, to date, in our not quite one year of operations as an independent five oh one C three, um, we've raised, uh, close to three million dollars. And we've brought a twenty dollar in return on investment for every one dollar these stakeholders have invested in us. We know that wildfire mitigation makes a difference. Just some quick examples of mitigation that's been done around buildings. And you can see everything around those spaces are burned. The spaces that were mitigated stayed. Um, Lake Christine also was an area that mitigation was done right up into the town boundary. It made a significant difference in protecting Elgerbell and Basalt. Uh, we work in the entire watershed. And so we have seven projects going right now from Aspen to Glenwood, including a sunny side burn in partnership with the Forest Service up in Aspen, um, some work around homes in Basalt. A significant mid-valley project that brings together Forest Service, BLM and private land to serve as an important fire break for the Snowmass Village area in a really hot, dry, densely fueled area, um, in, in between Carbondale and Snowmass. We're doing work directly with Marble. And then we just received a million dollars from the Colorado Strategic Wildfire Action Plan to do two really important projects in the Glenwood Springs area, including uh, work around Three Mile and Mountain Springs Ranch and work around Four Mile and Oak Meadows. And that leaves actually a couple hundred thousand left over to do additional projects that will identify through this wildfire-ready watershed action plan, which focuses on those post-fire hazards, flooding, mudslides, things like that. Um, we always take a strategic data-informed approach to project planning. And so we use the best data that we have available from the State Forest Service, the US Forest Service, including their PODS maps that have been recently published. And we come together as a team of about twenty individuals to identify the most strategic opportunities for mitigation um, that often are in the highest risk areas. We also know that there is no management trend that will let us control all wildfires. And so we do focus a good deal of attention on homeowner work. Recent science has showed us that as much as ninety percent of the homes lost to wildfire, including in LA, um, could have been saved if those homes were ember-proof. So we work directly with homeowners. This is example from a twenty-twelve Waldo Canyon Fire. You can see all of those dense fuels around those homes. When the fire came through, those homes were gone. The home that had done mitigation stayed standing. Um, and this is that famous house from the Lahaina Fire that, um, I think people call the, the miracle home. Really just, uh, metal roof and some good vegetation management around that home. Um, so we talk with homeowners, we talk about the kind of zero to five feet, five to thirty feet at this home hardening zone. We encourage them to sign up for risk assessments with our local fire districts. Um, we kind of stay with them to follow through on those home hardening actions. And we actually have a new home assistance fund where we can pay them up to fifteen hundred dollars for following through on those actions. Um, so we work at the individual level, we work at the community level, um, and I'll flip it over to Kevin to talk about kind of the power of that collaboration.
Thanks, Angie. Uh, I really am here just to support, uh, support Angie and the great work that she's doing. But uh, when I, when I sat back a few years ago, um, as the district ranger of seven hundred and fifty thousand acres of national forest in the Roaring Fork Valley and asked myself, what, what's one thing that I could do if I were to pick out one thing to, uh, to do the, like, the best work I could do for our community? Not, not really thinking just about the Forest Service and the lands that we manage for you all. Um, it was to try to bring together all the entities in the Roaring Fork Valley uh, to work on wildfire mitigation together, whether that's in the city, whether that's on uh, BLM, Forest Service within the county, uh, whatever that looks like. And so um, that's really what, uh, that's the, that's the vision that, uh, that Angie's been taking forward here as well. And so we don't look at as the collaborative, we don't look at, oh, we really, you know, we're, we're gonna focus in Aspen or, you know, we're gonna focus in Glenwood. It really is an intention to, uh, to look at the whole valley and try to bring it to, to where the need is the most and where the opportunities are the best. And so um, really, I think today we're here to illustrate that, make sure that, and bring, um, uh, just bring a light to that, to make sure that folks know, uh, what good work is happening, what that uh, return on investment is from, uh, from the collaborative and to say thank you to the City of Glenwood Springs for being one of the generous municipalities that is contributing to that. So, um, I think that's about it. Unless you have anything else.
All right. Well, thank you very much. You illustrated it very well. This was great information. And I'm, I'm glad to see that something is being done. And I think a lot of people would be happy to see that good people have worked on a great program. So bring it back to questions from council, Mitchell. Uh, well, to please.
Uh, guys, thank you. Um, thank you so much. To put, not to put you on the spot, but I'm just, I'm interested if, if you guys were there and if you can recount for us conversations from two thousand twenty-four with Garfield County, there's a big zero. There's a big zero on that table that really jumped out at me, right? And can you talk about that a little bit just to help people understand maybe why that's zero? And, and, um, and, and what 2025 might look like from then?
I can flip back to that slide too. So we, um, before my time, Kevin and the members of the collaborative worked to create a financial MOU with, um, the entities that you can see up here, which was 12 at the time, is now 13 because we've, um, had, uh, both Marble and Gunnison. Thank you. So i- in, in the early days, um, we had a lot of the same partners that are on this list join on to, to both, um, be part of a partnership and also be financial stakeholders in the collaborative. Um, and we learned early this year that it was Garfield's understanding that that was a one-year commitment. Um, all of our other partners have been annual contributors. So the hope is that we can bring them back on. Um, it was certainly a, a, a loss to hear that we couldn't count on that funding from 2024. Um, and we really hope to reengage them with 25.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, um, Counselor Zalinski, please.
Could you expand a little bit more on the resources available to homeowners for the mitigation services? How would, how would they go about, um, kind of taking advantage of those?
Sure. Um, our website is rfvwildfire.org, RFP for Roaring Fork Valley. And we think the best thing for them to do is to get that home risk assessment where firefighter comes to their door, no cost, confidential, um, spends about an hour with them, walking around the exterior of their home, and then gives them a prioritized list of all of their home's vulnerabilities and suggestions for how to make it ember-proofed. And then with that list in hand, they can apply to our, um, financial assistance program and we match one-to-one. So if they spend $3,000 doing mitigation actions, we can give them $1,500 reimbursement.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Zalinski. Excellent. Anybody from the public want to comment or ask questions? Anybody online? No, we'll see none. Well, we'll close that portion. Thank you so much for being here. Thanks for all the information. It was, is very informative. Thank you. Excellent. Item 13, South Bridge update. Looks like it's Ashley tonight.
Hi, Ashley Dostal, Assistant City Engineer. Good segue. South Bridge, since that's an evacuation route. Um, I'm just kind of here to still be brief. We, a positive note, we got in our N E A assessment amendment in to Federal Highway Administration before some people left that were noticeably had all the history of the project. So that was good news. We were able to get that out last week. So that's positive. So hopefully everything goes through and approves with the changes that we made. We were told that it would be, so that's good. And then we've continually been working with Jacobs, um, to get the plans to where they need to be. We should see 90% here in the next couple of months. And we have been working with the Jacksons and Holy Cross, um, to meet their needs as we work forward to right away acquisition. So that's all I really have.
Okay, thank you for the brief update. Any questions, Ashley? No, no one? Okay. Uh, anybody from the public? Here or online? No, we'll see no hand, so we'll, uh, close the public portion and move on. Thank you, Ashley. Thanks for the info. Item 14, tax incentive request for Safeway redevelopment.
Yes, post online.
Okay, is Hannah starting it out though?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's give Hannah her
Thank you.
Few minutes. Thank you.
Chair, Dem, and Council, Hannah Klausman, Community Development Director. I was just making sure that our, um, applicant is going to be promoted. He's logging on right now. Um, and I will start this off for you guys. This is a Economic Development Department item. So that's why I'm in front of you today. That might be surprising. And I'll lean heavily on our city attorney for those items that are more his purview. So in the staff report that was provided, I gave you guys some history on the property. We're talking about 2001 Grand Avenue, the old Safeway building, which has been vacant for a considerable amount of time. Um, I wanted to get kind of you guys familiarized with, we all kind of know the property, but the history of it, how long it's been vacant, what kind of condition the building is currently in, and set that stage for you to, um, review the sales tax rebate, uh, request that's in front of you tonight from Milco Investments, which is the current, um, owner of the property. They closed down the property and a potential new developer for the site. Um, so part of this, there is a request from the applicant that's in your packet, um, which hopefully you had a, a time to review and we can discuss questions on that. And then also the applicant will present after me briefly, of course. Um, I also detailed kind of a history, and if you guys have questions on this and how it's functioned, um, on our city incentives that are both on the books and have been previously on the books and kind of how we're doing it now, what you're seeing in front of you. We have a tier one sales tax rebate, um, which businesses can apply for that is currently operating in our code. And we previously had a tier two sales tax rebate, which is more, uh, in line with kind of the requests that you're seeing lately from businesses. Um, that was not renewed by staff, so not currently operating out of code. So these larger requests that don't fall into that very strict tier one sales tax rebate program, uh, come to you in this form. Also new, and you guys are very familiar with Jacob Zuck, our economic development specialist, and our new software placer AI that we use to do more economic analysis than we previously did in years past. Um, we have provided you with some statistics and data information on, uh, potential impacts and benefits of the proposed tenants that are before you, um, which fall into a thrift store use and a hardware store use. And, um, we, we talk a little bit about, you know, what this new use coming in is going to do to existing businesses that fall within that category, uh, the new sales tax that they are purporting to bring in and generate. Um, and then a brief analysis on whether we think that there is a demand, um, for the product. So I'm going to go through just a little bit on, on the thrift store side, some of the statistics that we gave you in the staff report. That particular use does show a little bit more of what we refer to as cannibalization. So when a new sto- store opens, that's an identical or very similar use to another business in town, there is inevitably a portion of those sales that will shift. And with thrift stores, we see a very high rate. Uh, but what I wanted to point out is that high rate is within the first year of that thrift store opening. Jacob analyzed, uh, the last couple thrift store openings that we've had in the city to get to these numbers. Obviously, this store is a little larger than what we have currently in Glenwood, so there's some variables here. But we did see about a 68% cannibalization from existing stores within that opening year. It's shiny. It's new. People go there. Uh, but that did really level off after that first year. So, um, with that, um, we also pulled some, um, Census Bureau retail trade reports, um, to get at unmet demand for this, uh, used merchandise store category. And we did see that there is, um, still some demand that's not being met within the city that we can see. So with that in mind, for, for the thrift store side, um, staff does believe that there's adequate unmet demand for this type of use, while also recognizing that there will be an immediate impact to some of our thrift stores that we have, uh, locally. Um, and also, uh, the developer gets into this in their letter a little bit more, but the, the thrift store that they're proposing has a wider draw. Um, so, uh, you know, 107-mile draw versus some of our thrift, smaller thrift stores, which are really more local, regional. So that also has the potential to pull in new clients into Glenwood, which, which can counter the cannibalization rates. Um, so we did the same analysis on the hardware stores, um, using the same sort of process there, looking at, uh, the, the stores that are similar that we have within Glenwood Springs. And we did find, you know, there will be a smaller cannibalization rate there that also papers off. I know the applicant explains in their letter, their particular hardware store has a larger draw as well and different products offered than what we currently have in Glenwood Springs. And he can certainly explain that more if you guys have questions or want additional detail. Um, so on the hardware store side, we also see that there's unmet demand, um, from the retail trade reports. We actually have a fairly high unmet demand. And what we're seeing from place or AI data is we have a lot of people that live, residents in Glenwood Springs that travel outside of Glenwood Springs to get those products. So we're seeing a lot of people leave our area in that trade area to go and purchase things. Uh, this store may have an impact on that, on bringing them back. So pros and cons, balances, this is, um, this is tricky, uh, data to present to you guys, but we wanted to give you some background to inform your decision. Uh, we also listed the fiscal impact, so get a little bit to the actual request that's before you tonight, which is a 50% um, sales tax revenue rebate over a 15-year period to cover $2 million in costs. What I will note is, um, uh, the applicant, uh, Robert Miller, um, does reference a scope of work that is still in the confidential bidding stage, so that wasn't provided to you, but can certainly speak more to the costs associated by category. And, and he does explain, um, those categories within his, uh, incentive request letter, so we can talk about that more. So with an estimated sales of eight million annually between the two tenants, this would result in an increase of approximately, uh, just over $300,000 in sales tax generation. So this is what was used to arrive at the timeline and rebate amount that you can see. Um, staff does not have a recommendation for you tonight. We're just providing you with the facts. And then, uh, any questions that we can answer and you guys can arrive at your conclusion on the incentive offer. And with that, I'll open up questions and then we can pull in Robert, uh, on the applicant side.
Sounds good. Thank you, Hannah. Let's bring it back to us. Questions to staff at this point? No, we'll see none. Okay, Counselor Zalinski, please.
So the tier tax, tier one sales tax rebate that's currently on the books and utilized, that's available to existing businesses right now if they wanted to expand? So I don't, I think that that's worth bringing up because, um, I hear a lot of, you know, question marks about why we're doing that. So if an existing business were to seek that, they could apply for it for a similar expansion?
Right. So with the tier two, um, that's got some limitations on it that won't necessarily apply a whole lot to existing businesses, but if you're expanding, you're adding, and you're going to be incurring system improvement fee, building fee costs, there is a very specific list of enumerated things that you can use that rebate for. Um, so it's going to apply to a very specific circumstance.
Got it.
And it's a limitation on 20% rebate of sales tax.
Okay.
So we have had, uh, businesses utilize that, um, smaller businesses, certainly. And if it's a startup or a new business or a new build, that would certainly, uh, be something that they want to look at. And we talk with people through. A lot of times what we're seeing is it doesn't quite apply to their situation because it does have very, um, strict parameters on what it can be used for.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Any other questions? No, we'll see none. Thank you, Hannah. Our applicant is online tonight, Robert Miller. Would you please state, uh, your name?
Robert Miller.
Excellent. And then could you please, uh, proceed with your presentation?
Uh, my present, I don't know if everybody's had the opportunity to view the letter that I wrote. But, I mean, th- that primarily articulates my presentation. We tried to, um, have the incentive that we're requesting self-sustainable to the specific property as opposed to, uh, real estate taxes or, uh, or a just grant that we've had received in other similar circumstances and other municipalities that we've worked at the country, around the country. Um, and then, and then we tried to itemize, um, specific items that were either being requested by the municipality or related to aesthetic appeal or improvements of the overall exterior of the property because of the dilapidation that has occurred over the last six or seven years of its vacancy. I mean, I understand that it was almost, uh, we were, we, we were borderline, um, ha- had it not been purchased with the intent that we're going to use it for, was, what, 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 there was a thought in town to condemn the property. So we're really resurrecting this property from, uh, the grave per se to what, if you, if the rendering has traveled around there internally there that you've looked at, you know, to, to what will hopefully be a sustainable building, uh, in business for the next 15 years. But I mean, I need help and I, I'm not, I'm, I'm pretty, a pretty transparent guy. Um, the, the seller gave me no breaks despite this property being on the market for five or six years, however long it was. My luck was I came around, uh, while there was competition on it. And if it weren't me, um, I, I suspect the hospital might, might, would have likely bought the property because they were the ones, um, sort of motivated the seller to sort of squeeze the timeframe in the price, which would have, I'm li- likely resulted in zero sales tax revenue, perhaps a freeze or, um, uh, or, or forgiveness on real estate taxes as well. Uh, the tenants that we've procured, um, as Hannah articulated, expect to have $8 million in sales. They draw from a long, a, a large radius, larger than the, um, uh, competition that currently exists in town. I think it will enhance the traffic flow, uh, in the overall town and for these specific sectors. Harbor Freight does have proprietary products and how they make them that the other, um, retailers do not in town. And both, in, in the thrift stores, 35,000 square feet, I, they, they generally attract, um, a clientele in that sector for, for a, a large radius. Um, a- and I would think that if I were in the thrifting, uh, if that was one of my interests, I, I'd be thrilled to come and check out this 35,000 square foot thrift store and see what they have to offer and compare it to other perhaps, um, similar businesses in town that might not be 35,000 square feet. But I think collectively, it enhances the community with additional shoppers and enhances an eyesore that the community had for the last five or six years that, you know, will be open hopefully by the end of the year and thriving. The, the, the percentage of the sales tax revenue that we're asking for is half. And I understand that that's somewhat customary on similar incentives that have been, um, uh, agreed to and approved, uh, through, from the municipality. And again, this is coming based upon the sole success of the property. We're not asking for any additional money or revenue or percentage of the revenue that otherwise, you know, was not created from the actual development and project that we are creating ourselves. But we need help. I mean, the, the, it's no secret, the purchase price is $6.5 million and I have a boatload of money we're putting into this property to improve it. Uh, I shared a segment of it, um, in my presentation that you guys are reviewing, but most of that is specific to, I thought, items that were appropriate to ask for reimbursement or assistance for, primarily aesthetics, improvements to, uh, building mechanicals, uh, the, the stormwater retention, uh, reconfiguration that, um, is being required. Uh, we're, we're putting a new delivery pad in the south side of the property. We had to negotiate an easement with the Wendy's property to do so in order for this project even to be successful because both tenants need to have delivery to their, um, uh, to their businesses. And our hope is to create a sustainable building, uh, for 15 or 25 or 40 years to come that the initial lease terms we negotiated are 15 years each. And I think they have three or four or five-year renewal, three or four or five, five-year renewal options each. And, and, and hopefully we've been able to sort of, um, you know, raise the property from the grave per se and create additional sales revenue in town for everybody to enjoy, but I need help. That's my presentation. I'm open to answer any questions that anybody has.
All right. Thank you very much for your information. Bring it back to counsel for, uh, questions to Mr. Miller. We'll start with, um, Counselor Zalinski, please.
So in your experience, or if you have any experience with the, the thrift store, does that, is it like a destination, like a regional destination because of the size or is it just another thrift?
I've never done business with ARC thrift stores before. I know they have about 68 locations. Um, they are, I think, non-for-profit, um, although they, they, they have sales, the sales and sales tax revenue. I mean, this is a large store, so my, my experience, while I have not worked with them before, my experience in the thrift, my kids thrift. So that's my experience in thrifting per se. I've been to, yeah, thr- 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 thrifting, uh, shows and stores with them. Uh, and, and they do, they do attract a specific sector of a clientele that, that is somewhat, I don't want to correlate it to, uh, back in the day, baseball card collecting. But there, 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 there is a tremendous sector of clientele that is looking for a specific item or a vintage item or, uh, that you've, or, or a collector that you find in thrift stores. And while there might be a 5,000 square foot thrift store or 15,000 square, square foot thrift store. And while there might be a five thousand square foot thrift store or fifteen thousand square foot thrift store, thrift store, this is a large thrift, thrift store. And I think it will attract a tremendous clientele far and wide from a large radius of, of, of Glenwood Springs, at least an hour away, they'll, they'll say. And I think that it will, the, the, this store will do very well. And I think the entire sector in town will do very well. And I think it will also transition into other unrelated businesses in town because of the pool, the draw that it will have. On we, on we, on weekends, they have, um, I don't want to call it a festival, but they, they tend to have specials on the weekends and they even draw further more so on the weekends they do during the, during the weekdays. I, I think collectively, I, I have to look at my notes here. I apologize. But I mean, we're going to bring sixty new workers to the property also, which I didn't mention. So there's going to be jobs created as well. Full-time and part-time, which is tremendous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Weimer.
Mr. Miller, thank you. Uh, thank you for your interest in that property. If there's a story there, could you please tell us a little bit about how you ended up with Harbor Freight and Arc? And were there, were there other, was there other interest outside of those two?
I, I'm glad you asked that question. Um, we're a preferred developer for Harbor Freight around the country. We've, we've, we've built five or six or seven of them around the country. We've built a nice confidence and relationship with the real estate department, the legal department, and they trust us. Uh, we just finished a deal in Dickinson, North Dakota where we bought a vacant forty thousand square foot vacant supermarket property, which is a, a tight, really tight market. No one could get the particular property under, under contract. And we happened and done business with the, the seller previously, landlord previously, who at the time was Nash Finch, actually. Uh, and this property had tenants begging to get into it, which we ended up doing a deal with Harbor Freight TJ Maxx. Uh, conversely, as you mentioned, the Glenwood Springs property, uh, we're lucky to have that leased. We, we we looked far and wide for a thirty-five thousand square foot tenant, for a ten thousand square foot tenant, for anybody we could lease that, the, the additional space to. Uh, a lot of Harbor Freight's uh, executives live or have second homes in the area. And they said, Bobby, this property's been vacant for five or six years. We really want to be there. Will you buy it? So we initially pursued the deal with Safeway in November of twenty-three. Um, thankfully, it, for our sake, it correlated with uh, Kroger's unsuccessful takeover of, of the company. But because their legal team was distracted, they initially wanted a, 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 like a sixty-five day due diligence and a thirty day close, which I could have never done because I couldn't have afforded to buy the property without having it leased. Um, so um, so we dragged the contract on because their legal department, the seller's legal department really couldn't focus on um, getting the contract together. And in, and we found nobody. I mean, we're talking to Sprouts, we were talking to Sierra, we were talking to TJ Maxx, we were talking to a Five Below, Dollar Tree, the, I mean, um, even Dollar General. They weren't offering us enough rent based upon the cost of the property was going to, we, we, we needed to achieve for the purchase price and the estimated improvements of the property. In September, the seller called and said, Bobby, we need to put this under contract or we're going to go in another direction, which was honorable since it had been now ten months later from what was a sixty-five day initial due diligence. And the backup buyer was the hospital. So knowing that I, Harbor Freight had bet on me to try to make a deal and I didn't want it to slip, slip through my hands, I put the property under contract in September. I bought additional due diligence and, and uh, ended up, you know, stringing it out until January of this year. But luckily, at eleven and a half hour, we procured Arc thrift stores. And Arc's requirement was to be on the north side of the property where Harbor Freight wanted to be because that's where the delivery docks were. And we configured it to so that in order to make a deal instead of no deal, um, the Harbor Freight reluctantly agreed to go on the south side of the property, provided we build them a weather uh, enclosed enclosure for the, their delivery area, which we then had to uh, negotiate an easement with Wendy's on. And we're lucky we have them. So the point is that we did not have a lot of takers for this property. We didn't have a line at all. We had a lot of people turn it down. I remember when talking with Hannah uh, earlier in the summer, you know, just brainstorming on who she liked to see there. And she said, we'd really like another supermarket tenant. And we tried, we tried, we tried, we really tried. We just couldn't get it. So um, to answer your question, sorry to be long-winded, we, we, we're lucky with what we have, honestly, or, or, or I suspect the hospital would, would buy this in a New York minute. Um, probably in a decent buck that I, that, that I may more than I'm going to make on this deal as it, as it is right now, I can tell you that. Um, but we're loyal to our tenants and they've, they've led us to business before. So I'm not going to pull the rug out from under them. And here we are. So um, I just need help affording some of the uh, improvements that we're going to need to make for the property and that the city is asking us to do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions? I got a quick question for you. So you already answered one of them with the supermarket. Uh, apparently you have tried. Um, I assume you've worked with supermarket elsewhere, but it didn't, it didn't, uh, it didn't take. Uh, the other question I had was the stormwater mitigation that you said we're making you do or the city makes you do. What, uh, what price tag is that?
Um, give me a moment here. Just let me look at my, my, I'm looking at the budget that I, that I um, forward it just one moment, please. And we're still negotiating, as I understand it, our contractor um, with um, with the city on sort of the, where the, where the, how the island is going to be and where the uh, uh, retention area is going to be on the northwest side of the property. So just give me uh, a mo- a moment, please, and I'll, I'll add it up.
So while, while Robert is looking for that information on the stormwater side, these are our new stormwater regulations that are triggered from our engineering department uh, with uh, any significant redevelopment. And so they're looking at that large expanse of parking area that contributes to runoff and making the improvements um, that I think the city would like to see happen there. Um, I do not know that number off the top of my head. So hopefully I can get it though on my computer if you guys need it.
Yeah, that's fine. And he's looking for it. So we'll get the answer.
I mean, I, 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 I think it may cost us upwards of two hundred thousand dollars. We haven't priced it out yet. Um, I'm looking at two different budgets right now from different time periods. So, so forgive, forgive me for a moment.
It's all good. Um, and, and is Hannah, real quick, the, the stormwater, is this um, mandated by the state yet? Or is this something we started, but?
This is actually homegrown. This is us, um, that we passed with the city council.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
To the city, to the city's defense, actually, despite what this is going to cost me, it could have cost me more. I mean, they, they, they were lenient with me on a couple of the requirements that they might not have had to have otherwise been, been, honestly. So uh, which I appreciate above, but, but it's, it's not nothing. It's not, okay, great, you know, good luck, lay the parking lot and we'll let the water flow, you know, down the side of the mountain to the river. They really want to protect uh, the grit that comes from cars and debris. Um, so other than the runoff from the roof, which is labeled as clean stormwater because it goes from the roof to the gutter to the uh, si- si- side of the sort of, of the, of the um, uh, river base down. So that's considered clean stormwater, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to, we're putting a new roof on. So the gutter system is going to have to uh, account for that. Um, I, I'd say upwards of two hundred thousand dollars. Back, we haven't bid it, we haven't bid it out yet and we haven't, we haven't fully determined.
I'll take the two hundred thousand for now.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from council? I see none. Um, anybody from the public have any questions? Or comments?
Uh, we just note for the record that you did receive some public comments that I believe got into the packet, didn't they, Ryan?
It didn't make it in the packet.
It came in too late.
But we got the email today.
You had the email today. So just noting for the record.
For a local shop owner, yes. Uh, thank you. So I see nobody, anybody online? Raise your hand. No, I see no one. Excellent. I'll bring it uh, back to council for motion and discussion on this uh, tax incentive request.
I, I appreciate very much your consideration. I can tell you, both of our tenants are excited to be in town. They really are. And I, I'm excited to, I appreciate you working with us. I'm an out-of-towner, I'm unknown. I mean, I sent my resume to Hannah and she's passed it around. Um, so I appreciate v- very much the welcome that you've given us, the cooperation that you've uh, shared with our um, contractors. Um, we've had, we've actually have tried to bid locally as well. I don't know the um, roster of subs that he's hired, but uh, I know that he has uh, at, at one point, somebody said, can you hire local subs? And I said, we'll certainly try. So we're not trying to exclude anybody, but we need sort of the best man for the job at the most efficient um, value. A- a- and um, but, but I think both of these, these tenants will have a sustainable business for years to come and dr- a- a- and improve the community, not only just this property, which is the center and ta- center of town, but improve, improve the community and hopefully draw a, a, a shopping sector that, you know, wasn't there before.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your final comments. Back to council. I, I think this is, this should be an action item tonight. So I'm any motion really. So just we can move forward. Counselor Shacter, please.
Um, regarding the agenda item request for tax incentive request for Safeway redevelopment, I'm going to um, move that we deny.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And Counselor Sims.
I'm going to second uh, Councilman Shacter's motion.
Okay. Just to be clear, we have a motion to deny this request and a second to back it up. Uh, any discussion? We'll start with Counselor Solinsky.
Um, you know, first of all, I just want to say I so appreciate that you're investing in our community. I think this is fantastic. Um, you know, we we have a portfolio of things that amenities that we have available in our community. And then we have amenities that, you know, there's a void. And I think it's super unfortunate that you were unable to get some of those asks off of your list. And it's so disappointing. I'd love to talk to you someday and figure out why you got so many those. Um,
Well, if I got two, right?
You got two, you got two. But um, I think that as far as you know, taking money from our general fund, which is where this would come from, correct?
It, it otherwise might not exist.
Let's, let, let us, let us discuss without interruption, please.
I apologize.
Yeah, if I may, um, Counselor Solinsky. So this is based, the way these incentive programs have been done in Glenwood. Uh, it's a performance to pay. So
Right.
Sales tax is collected. Um, it's not anything that you're currently have that is being paid out. It's the whatever dollars they're bringing in. They have to pay fully. And then on a quarterly basis, they are rebated a portion of that. That's how we've done it in the past.
Understood.
And, and those rebates will hit the fund that the sales tax normally hits. About forty percent of that would hit the general fund.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. You good?
Yeah.
For now? Okay. Counselor Shacter, please.
Yeah, this is difficult. My, and I've made the motion partly because I believe that's my support of the motion, but also for discussion. My feelings are several. Number one, it's a big ask. And yeah, if you look at the numbers, there's potentially a payback, but it looks like based on the projections and the unknown cannibalization, the payback period, albeit we have zero sales tax. Now, the payback period's pretty long for the size of the ask. I'm also concerned that we don't have a clear-cut tier two level anymore. Um, and it seems like maybe we're lacking a nexus and a policy that would handle bigger asks on them with more parity and inequitable fashion based on, like the letter we got um, from the public, some criteria may be different than what we have, but we don't have one. We don't have a policy that we can apply equitably, no matter what the applicant is. That disturbs me. Um, the third thing is the projections, and I'm not going to deny anybody's projections. However, we're talking about potentially job increase, which is always wonderful, but no housing provided because we don't have requirements for housing. Um, secondly, we know from the valley that job creation is really ju- is often job rotation. And that's a part of the cannibalization. We can't quantify easily. Um, that's another factor that makes me a little skeptical. Um, the third one is, um, I worry thrift store shopping is a big deal in this valley. And Arc is a giant, but I'm not sure that it's worth risking, particularly that first year projection. Heaven knows the second what happens to our more boutique and locally owned thrift stores. And this is a nonprofit whose CEO does make hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it is not, it's a nonprofit in structure, but not in bottom line. Um, that's important to understand. So, and also I appreciate any developer, but the fact that it was chosen to buy as its condition and maybe not negotiated like to take care of the deficiencies, that's not necessarily something I'm comfortable with covering. So for a variety of factors, I guess at this point, I think it's too big of an ask and I wouldn't be willing to support it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Shacter. Any additional comments at this point? Counselor Weimer.
This is the first time this topic has come up in front of this council, right? And so I think there's, there's a lot of initial sort of contemplation and, and value judgments that have to be placed, right? When we make decisions like this. And um, and, and I, and I think that the request is, is it's good that it's, it's unique enough, right? Because you, you don't want to have to see this stuff come up all the time. Um, and, and I think that our ability to provide sa- sales tax incentives, I think is a really special tool. And it, and it's a tool that should be used in, under really special circumstances. And I don't think this is a special circumstance. And, and, and here's, here's why. I think that ideally we are looking to use this as a bit of a carrot for businesses that we are actively seeking and trying to bring into the community, not for businesses that have already decided to be here, right? Number one. Number two, I think it's about enrichment of our community uh, and of our local economy. Uh, and, and enrichment comes from a couple of different, you know, vectors. I, I think that, um, you know, the uniqueness of, of an offering, quality of, of employment, um, mixed use, sort of treatment, you know, Sumner, you talked about housing, you know, not necessarily has to be, you know, part of the part of the deal, but, but, you know, some broader sort of perspective as, as to how this fits into the community and how, how it could be more sustainable. And then, and then, you know, synergy with existing local businesses. And I think this is something that we've been talking about a little bit offline. You know, at the end of the day, we're talking about a hardware store and a thrift store. And, and the town is chock a block with both already, right? And, and businesses that have that have worked really hard to get to where they are. And, and hardware stores and thrift stores that are within almost a stone's throw of the Safeway building, right? And, and uh, I, I think we owe it to our existing partners and our, and our local business owners to prioritize them versus, versus newcomers. And, and I think Sumner approached it also, we can't, you know, this being a special tool under very special circumstances, we can't let the fact of a potentially bad real estate deal come into play, right? That if, if, yeah, you know, the roof needs replaced and the things are gone and it's been stolen and, and ransacked, that needed to be part of part of negotiation. And if it was, and we still fell on bad, on the bad side of things, then I'm, you know, I'm very sorry. I think a lot of us have been there on the bad side of, of, of these deals. We just can't use this as a bit of a, of a of a fix or something like that. So I, I was going into this conversation tonight, not in support. Um, and uh, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm glad that the, the motion was made as it was. It threw us off a little bit because we don't normally get motions to deny things. We get motions to support them and then, and then we talk and then we, then we deny or we, we kind of, we kind of, you know, break fifty-fifty or something. But um, I, you know, Mr. Miller, I, I do wish you, do wish you success. Um, uh, you know, uh, we, we do thank you and we will welcome you. But I, I myself draw, and, and I know that, that my neighborhood draws the line short of offering you special incentives for, for coming in. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Counselor Weimer. Anybody else? No, we'll see none. Um, I'll chime in quick. And uh, the reason I asked for the uh, city mandated improvements is instead of just denying it, uh, I'd be willing to offer some sort of a sales tax rebate, let's say up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for five years. Just to show that Just to show that we are welcoming them and we are hopefully easy to work with, not a pushover, but easy to work with. And just give them some sort of a thank you for, for investing in our town. But this is just a thought and it doesn't have to go anywhere. I just think it would be another approach to denying. Any other discussion? Yeah, councillor Schacter.
I'd have to go back to your report, Hannah. What would, what if would tier one apply in any situation to this particular request? And what were the max on that? I don't recall your, you had it on your report.
Uh, yeah. So the tier one rebate is up to twenty percent sales tax rebate. But it can only be applied towards system improvement fees and electric line extension fees. Electric line does not, it doesn't apply here and system improvement fees wouldn't be either. We've added stormwater as a fee. It's not listed in our system improvement fees. So we could, or we could reasonably call that a system improvement fee that we've added. So then that would be applicable in tier, tier one.
And do we have any dollar ballpark to what a tier one would apply in this case? What, what dollar amount of savings would be involved?
What dollar amount of, sorry, I'm not.
If tier one.
I, I think I can, let me, let me interpret. I think what you're asking is if, since really system improvement fee, since since there's really no electric line extension, no system improvement fees for water and sewer that really apply in this instance. There aren't any, if you did use, if you did treat stormwater as a tier one expense, I think what the applicant said to Marco was that it was somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars that that might be. The maximum recovery, recognizing in tier one, there's a limitation on twenty percent of sales tax dollars that are rebated towards that purpose.
Now I understand. Thank you.
And I guess, I guess in respect to Mayor Protem's request, I would want to hear. I don't think I'm willing to change the motion at this point, but the applicant can come back and ask for tier one or some other adjusted request. I assume that. So that's all.
I, I think, I think you're absolutely correct. And, and now that she said that, I would actually prefer that instead of us trying to figure out, or me trying to figure out.
So after the motion, I'm going to have some, after your vote, I'm going to have some questions about amending tier one then.
Sure. Actually, I, well, this, this goes later. I'll, I'll save my comments for later. Okay, great. Any other comments? Motion still stands as the denied the request. Ryan, would you please call the question? That's right. It passes. It's unanimous. All right. Thank you, Ryan. Mr. Miller, thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for, like councillor Zelinski said, investing in our, in our town. And we wish you, we wish you all the best. And hopefully we can come to some sort of an understanding at some point. I would love to see you again. So thank you very much.
Thank you for consideration, guys.
Thank you. And like, I, I, I do think that maybe I'll start with my comment quick now that we're still on this topic, but what councillor Schacter said with his skepticism of not having a program in place or not having policy in place to actually address this, at the discretion of council, obviously, but we had a work session scheduled a little while ago and it was, it was removed because it was making more sense to do it when the new councillor is seated. And that makes complete sense. I get that, but I, I do believe this is an important piece of policy that we should put in place. And then we actually have a guideline to where we can fall back on. And I think it would have helped all of us to fall back on that guideline tonight. To see how we would move forward with something like this. So that said, let Carl.
Yeah, no. So my question really was, is how does council feel about including stormwater in the tier one expenses? Because it is something new that we've imposed. It is going to have a material impact on a number of, you know, as redevelopment occurs. It's one of those places that's going to pop up. So it's not in the code today. But if you guys, if I get a general head nod, Hannah and I will at least look at an amendment to the code to include that fee in the tier one structure. And maybe take a look at a couple of the other fees. Building permit fees, things like that potentially to make tier one a little more robust. As it might apply also to redevelopment of businesses here in Tan, which is going back to the early two thousands, what we were trying to do with wasn't called tier one back there. What we tried to do in, you know, somewhere between two thousand three and two thousand six. I can't remember the original version of that.
I got some talkers lined up here, Carl. So I think while they talk, they can just say, yes, I think that's a good idea or not. So we'll start with councillor Zelinski.
So Hannah, I'm wondering if you can she had any information or can share. I think for a couple of things, I'd like to see a little bit more robust policy like councillor Dem asked for, just to know how that tool can be utilized as more of like a, a recruiting tool. But do you have any information about like why it has been so challenging to get some of these kind of more desirable, like requested businesses to come into our community?
You know, the community development department hears inquiries and we've been talking with quite a few developers for a while. So we hear I'll call it anecdotal information from them. And Carl can probably expound upon this, but it is challenging to fill these large retailer positions. And we're seeing that not just in this particular location, but other locations. It's taking longer. I'm sure that points to some economic factors that are going on right now. But for specific industries, what we've found and I have learned in, in attending conferences on behalf of you guys. You know, if we're talking about a grocery retailer, there's usually a very specific set of criteria that they are looking at to locate in a, somewhere. That could be, you know, that trade area that they're looking at. How many people are within a fifteen minute drive of the store? And so, you know, when they're, when the developers are out there looking for locations, we don't meet a lot of that, just kind of based on our size. We are in a better position than some locations, but we don't tick off every single one of those. And, you know, kind of what I've heard in, in talking with some of the brokers at these conferences is you know, Glenwood Springs is uniquely positioned to be attractive, but maybe not for another five to 10 years. So it's also a timing thing. So being able to offer an incentive. Being able to offer an incentive and having a clear incentive package that's transparent. You might be able to shorten that timeline to get a retailer that you truly desire to come sooner than their strict parameters would.
So that feeds directly into my second question. It's like, you know, if there is a set of criteria, what can we do to make ourselves look more attractive?
I'm so glad you asked. I, you know, one of the, the Colorado Economic Development Council Conference that I attended last fall was really illuminating in that sense. There's a suite of tools that you can use. One of the biggest things is a transparent policy. So having council agree on these things and have it in code, then it's out there. Then your community and economic development department and your attorney's office can effectively communicate a standpoint without the risk that is part of what we're doing right now, the unknown aspect. And there, there is a variety of other tools. So if that's something that council is interested in, I can certainly bring that education piece back to you guys for consideration.
I will not speak for all of council, but this councillor is incredibly interested in that. I feel really bad for the applicant tonight because I feel like he came before us pretty humbly and I didn't feel very equipped to help him, you know? And so I think that would be a good place to start.
One of the things I would add on to that, and I know that in particular grocers are something that everybody has been as an industry. I don't think I have a client that I'm not trying to land a grocery store for.
Right.
And I have been trying for eight, 10 years. And one of the struggles we have along with what that service area is you've got to think about supply routes and the reliability of those supply routes. And it's a little bit, you know, we're at the end of the road. Nobody else passes through. There's no place to go. So it makes it expensive. And the other thing is we live on the Isomity Corridor on this side of Vale Pass in the Glenwood Canyon. And the uncertainty of being able to consistently deliver goods also factors into that on how comfortable a retailer is in something like food. On whether or not they're going to, you know, deliver here. And we even saw that where we, you know, we lost, now we have bus staying, but we lost a company that used to, you know, provide shuttle services from here to DIA because they're uncomfortable with the canyon and their reliability. And so those all factor into it. I will tell you that the, the current economic conditions, the cost of capital. If you're wanting to fill spaces, you're, you know, it, it's, it's not a kind of from your perspective, a buyer's market, if you will.
Understood.
And so it is getting increasingly difficult. And I, I will tell you, you know, like say Silverthorn has a it's a very short, but a very clear enhanced sales tax incentive policy. We have been trying for 10 years to get a grocery store and another one in Silverthorn and can't in, you know, the policy is abundantly clear. There are a ton of people. It just is one of those things. It's a very difficult, that one is very difficult to fill in particular.
Understood. I just to that same point though, you know, if you look at some of our adjacent communities, they are not the same size we are, dealing with other constraints and their amenities are newer, more well provided for, you know, I mean, Carbondale City Market, I envy it. I go in there, I envy it. You got a Whole Foods and a City Market.
Yeah. So I can tell you why the Whole Foods is there.
I, I, I can, and I don't want to debate it.
But it is funny things that, that trigger things. Whole Foods looked at a site here. Probably preferred the site here. At the time, the senior vice president lived in Snowmass and wanted to be closer to his store. So, you know, I mean, and you have a different market there, obviously. Carbondale, you're not talking about a new grocery. You're just talking about a redevelopment, which certainly that's something you could, I'm sure have that conversation with Kroger.
Yeah. And including the stormwater, I think that it makes sense to put that into the tier one.
Thank you. Councillor Schacter.
Thank you. I would encourage a couple of things. But any explanation, Carl or Hannah, on the tier one, as it's written right now, says up to twenty percent of annual sales tax. So let's, this example, if we say, okay, the sale, the gross sales tax would have been three hundred grand. So we're talking about, are we talking about sixty grand a year for X number of years until a threshold is hit for those development fees?
Five years?
Five consecutive years.
Five consecutive. So you can do twenty percent over five years.
Of the, so in this case, it might be only sixty grand a year for five years, if that's what the twenty percent turns out to be. I, I would encourage a robust look at tier one and include stormwater, which is a big deal. Anything else we may be missing as a tier one incentive. I would also, as I think Aaron and Mitchell and others said, I would look at also a robust but definable tier two, reinstate a tier two that is clear, larger, for larger benefit to the city, but also has a, a parry. I don't know whether we model others, but has some kind of parity or equity formula that says, hey, it's based on square footage or it's based on number at least. But it could be applied to virtually any new applicant or landlord in the city, whether they be little or big. I would encourage that as a clear policy. And third, I would still hold in reserve. And I don't know how you do it, the ability as councillor Weimer said and, and others had, hold in reserve council's ability to override, not override these, to even exceed these incentives for identified targeted businesses, a, a, a less defined tier three that gives a fair amount of discretion. I don't know how we do that. But I would encourage us to look out and see how it's doing.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's in part what we were doing with, if you want to call the discussion we had tonight a tier two or a tier three discussion. I think that's a little bit what these fall into.
Yeah. And one other thing, if I may, Mr. Mayor Protem, maybe Jacob could help us. Again, I, I understand how hard it is to get any business in here and it takes special interests. I, I suspect the typical algorithm doesn't work, although we are uniquely perched positioned. So maybe Jacob's numbers can show a way greater amount of traffic than the algorithms for our population clearly don't. And also maybe we look at companies with supply chains out of Salt Lake City. I, I don't know if that's worthy, but anyway, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you councillor Schacter. So if there's no more comments or discussion. From what I hear, okay, first of all, storm, storm drain, yes, absolutely included on my, on my part. But from what I hear is this was half a workshop. So I think, I really think this deserves an hour afternoon talk on how we want to do this and how we want to approach this in the future. A, a, a solid policy and councillor Schacter lined it out nicely and Weimer too, I think is needed. I think we should move forward with that, put that on the schedule at some point soon.
One of the things I would ask you guys is, do you think, something Hannah and I have talked about, and I just want to get, as we're thinking about the tier two and a potential, new tier two and potentially revising tier one is thinking, do you want to think about this a little bit on a neighborhood basis too? On what, you know, what, when you're thinking about amenities, are you thinking about amenities for a particular neighbor? What is a neighborhood missing maybe when we're talking about? You know, we, we tend to think in big aggregate numbers of sales tax dollars for the whole city. But do we want to be thinking about it also on a neighborhood component of is, you know, I mean, because when you get to smaller businesses or amenities that neighborhoods don't have? And should we be thinking about that as part of this package?
Sure. Yeah. Well, I, I, I did look at the packet for that workshop and for whatever it's worth, the one from Littleton jumped out. That was that, that was my, probably my, yeah, it was, it was like five or six of them, whatever. And Littleton was the one that jumped out. And I'm like, oh, I could do this maybe with different numbers. Might be something to look at and then we'll reconvene and to put this in a workshop. So. Okay, great. Let's, uh, let's wrap up item fourteen. Thank you. Thank you all. Moving into fifteen resolution, twenty twenty five oh five, electric, electric rate tariff updates for twenty five. And before Matt gets going, I'd like to apologize and thank you for taking the questions upfront. I knew you were the guy that had the answers and I knew I couldn't stumble through it. Probably none of us could. So thank you for that.
Where are you going? We have found a lot of water waste in the city of Glenwood Springs from just changing this one rate over to a volume based option. It's pretty amazing. I'd be very interested at the end of the year, how much water we can actually save.
That's a good thing.
We should be able to quantify that.
That's a good thing. Yeah. Thank you, Matt.
So anyhow, moving into electric tariffs, basically, obviously, electric tariff is an electric rate increase. We're going to continue to see electric rate increases. If you have read the staff report, you know, I'm projecting between April first and the end of the year, we're going to see about a nine hundred thousand dollar increase in our purchase bill, which right now is about ten million, five hundred thousand dollars. So it's going to go to eleven something, eleven three, eleven four. Couple of reasons for that. Mean did, you did elect to be a green electric city. And that does come with a little bit of a fee associated with it. So when we buy power from mean, we're a K member. We're not an M member. We're a K member, which means we pay five percent more than an M member would because we're not on the lifetime purchase agreement. We're on a 10 year purchase agreement. So we pay a little bit more for that. The green rate is five percent more than that. So we're paying basically 10% more than an M member would be at mean. But we chose to do that back in twenty nineteen, really hasn't changed much. But as it goes up, ours goes up a little bit faster than the other one because we're 10% higher. So basically at this moment, we're going to see increases in the, I think the staff report says nine point eight percent on our fees for bulk purchase. Ten percent on a fixed cost recovery fee. And Excel's fees have basically gone up, I was thinking twenty percent, but from last year to this year, we used one million KW H less. And it went up sixty thousand dollars from a hundred and seven to a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. We're already seeing pretty significant increases in our transmission fees. And with the power pathways project in Denver, that could go up another eighty percent over the next three or four years. So basically we used to pay a million dollars in transmission fees. There's a distinct possibility in a few years that will be two million dollars. That doesn't get us power. That just gets us power from point A to point B. No matter who we purchase power from, it will be power from point A to point B. It'll be coming from a different way. But there are certain people that own the transmission lines and they have fees associated with those transmission lines. So in this particular case, it's mainly on Piesco's transmission lines and we pay that fee. In this particular case, it's mainly on Piesco's, uh, transmission lines and we pay that fee. So. Long story short, uh, we did a rate study in 2022. Uh, Andrew did a great job with that. He projected some of these things. We knew power pathways could potentially be coming. He suggested a 5.2% rate increase basically over a four year period. This would be year number three, actually. And he nailed it. So 5.2% basically gets us a $900,000 bump in revenue. Uh, so everything stays static. We still have enough for capital. We still have enough for labor. We still have enough for all the things that we need to do with the electric grid. So that is what we are recommending is April 1st, uh, that we implement these 5.2% increase. In electric rates and you'll notice we're not changing the flat rate, just the power rate, uh, associated with the tariff sheets. Questions, comments, concerns, things you want to know.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Counselor Sims, please.
Would this equate about what? 15 to $20 per household per meter on a monthly basis, give or take, or?
No, I mean, your average household is between 100 and $200. So 5% is five to 10 bucks.
Thank you, Counselor Shakt.
Questions? Thank you. When, when is our next re-up with means?
2029. That'll be a conversation that we're going to start here soon. Mean is who they are and they will continue with the way they're going to be, which is fine. We really like them. I really enjoy working with them. Will we go out to the market? I mean, most likely that is the prudent thing to do is to have at least the conversation. Where the market is, a lot of the market just wanted to purchase us, not sell us power.
Right. Second question, Matt of three. Are we, are we totally out of the loop? Is it up to? Utility commissioner, somebody with these transmission fees, no matter. How high they go? I mean, is it out of our control, even though we're not the end user necessarily?
How do I answer that question?
Other than protesting to.
I, I was going to say you, um, the P U C, um, allows them to set those rates. The P U C has historically always allowed. A regulated entity to pass through costs that they can justify to the rate payer because they're. You know, they're a utility company. That's what they do. With the exception of the Power Pathway Project, which I think we have some legitimate concerns about, you know, and we, we are engaged. On that one, you know, I, there's not a lot, the P U C is not going to say no to those increases in transmission costs. And frankly, they're probably, um. Justified in the sense that there are, you know, increasing costs associated with transmission. Primarily around how you manage your transmission lines and wildfire risk. Um, and Excel is acutely aware of that. And so I think in large measure, the answer, that was a really long winded way of saying, you don't have a lot of, you don't have any leverage. And it is unlikely the P U C is going to limit their ability to increase costs.
Which is a segue to my third question.
Can I answer that a little bit more on that one though? So it's, it's public knowledge that we have put a dispute into the FERC resolutions that have approved these power pathways projects. So we're still in a bit of a legal proceedings process with that whole entire thing. So we are trying to get to the three mean entities, which is, uh, us, Aspen and Center. Out of the power pathways, call it, uh, project costs, since it does not benefit us in any way. We are not using those. We are using the transmission lines with power sources in another location. So there is still a legal proceeding going on at this moment for that. Um, and S P P West R T O is coming. Which is interesting because we should have a regional transit authority, basically, which organization, sorry. So that would basically regulate all the transmission in the state of Colorado, whatever areas covering it so that. Power pathways couldn't come in without the whole organization looking at it, saying this is what the Colorado needs. Well, it's not just one company putting in transmission lines and charging people for it. It's a regional authority, basically. It says, hey, this is a great idea. All of you are working together. This is the power coming from here, here and here. It's not overloading the lines. Or if it is, you need to rebuild them. So we, we kind of need one of those. And I believe Hanson has a bill out that's 2030. We're supposed to have an R T O. Covering the state of Colorado. So I think there's this, this timeframe that it doesn't exist. Some of it's coming in, it's covering our area. But where our transmission lines come through, it is not covering. So it's, it's this mess of electrical fun, I'm going to call it. That is going to come to a head probably in the 2030s unless, uh, somebody changes that bill or comes up with another bill. We should have an R T O in the state of Colorado, which would then regulate all of this. And help people build to what is needed, not just what their plan is at that exact moment.
So my third question, and partly to avoid what happened at the beginning of the meeting with citizens before council. How do we explore? And, and rate increases, everybody's sensitive to it, no matter what, even though, okay, we've saved you money on pay as you throw. We've saved you money on water, even though. Large users, users may not believe it yet. How do we employ? P I O and Slate to take this complex issue and say, hey, Glenwood. Here's how rates are set. Here's why we control or not. Is that something we can? Kind of do a rate sheet thing that says, listen, it may not answer all your questions, but here's something. Not dumbed down, but more simplified. Uh, and should we? I, that's the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Slinski, please.
So you said something that I want to revisit back on. Um, you said most of the other. People that you've tried to want to buy us. What is the benefit to the community for this being a city provided service rather than selling our customer base to a third party?
So right now it's response and cost. So the standard cost for a kilowatt hour in the state of Colorado, according to the P U C is 15 cents. We're at 12 oh five, 1278, depending on which category you fit in. So we're still below the cost, the average cost within the state. Some of our regional partners are a little bit lower, some are a little bit higher, um, by two cents and maybe two cents kind of thing, but we have control over the system ourselves. We have the control over the reliability of the system, the capital input for the system and who we hire to run it. So that we know that when there's a problem, the answer will come very quickly. When you, you lose control of that, you lose controlled knowledge of the system when you sell it off. Could it be rebuilt? Sure. It depends on who it's sold to.
The, the other aspect, and this is one that was incredibly important to counsel, at least back in 2019, was the move to renewables. We have some control in our ability to negotiate a contract, whether it's mean or Excel or whoever our supplier might be. That you lose when you lose control of your own system.
So I asked this question, it's purposeful because, you know, every once in a while, especially when you have rate changes or, you know, you implement something like pay as you throw. It feels a little like the city is monopolizing options. And so I think it's important that we address the benefits. You know, that this isn't just us being heavy handed as a municipality. We are truly doing this for the citizenry and it's, there's a benefit there. And I think it's important to note.
That's why we do rate studies. It's not staff sitting here telling you that it needs to be this. Staff just tells a consultant, this is what we need to function. O and M wise, capital wise, here's the future. We want to be green, whatever those, those conditions are. And then the, the consultant says, okay, this is what you need to charge.
Got it.
And the conversation that we just had a moment ago is almost the conversations I wanted to have because we could see these wastes. But they, they were not being accounted for appropriately. So when you account for them, all of a sudden the, the reality of people's worlds change and they're like, oh, we can fix that. And that helps everybody with less water, less electricity, less gas, whatever is being sold. So it's not like we're going out and just lining our coffers. You know, we don't have huge cash reserves at any of these enterprise funds. We're kind of, if you ask our consultant, we don't have enough. If you ask me and Steve, we're fine. But we're not lining the coffers. We're just trying to keep the systems up and running in a reliable way. We don't have power outages or as few as possible. We don't have lines coming down. We're not, you know, struggling for water or sewer, whatever it is. Everybody is comfortable when they get home and they don't have to think about it.
Cool. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you. Additional questions? We'll see none. Uh, Matt, I, I think you said it, but, um, the, the, the way we. Purchase our electricity is, is at this point, almost our only option.
I wouldn't say that it is the only option. Right now it is very convenient and we have control over slight, some control over the option. Cause I sit on the board. I sit on many of the commissions associated with it. So if we want them to move, that company to move to more green. Which I know everybody thinks is cheaper, but it's not in a lot of cases because you have to buy more of it. That we have control over those things. If we don't care about those things anymore, sure, we could save 10 or 20% potentially, 10 or 15%. Really quick. But then is that what the city really wants? Is that what our residents really want? I know people live here. They're like. I don't have to put solar panels on my house because we are buying 100% green energy.
I, I would follow that up. With keeping in mind that there are two different things here. One is who we purchase power from. The other is no, we don't have a choice on who we use for transmission because they own the lines. That's that. And more for the public's benefit. There, there are two things we have to pay for here. One is the power itself. The other is the transmission of that power.
Okay, makes sense. Okay. Any, oh, okay. All right, great. If there's no other question, anybody in the public, uh, questions from council, anybody in the public like to, uh, ask? Or comment on this item? Nobody here in the public? Anybody online? No hands. Excellent. Close the public portion. I'll bring it back to council for a motion in. Resolution 2025 oh five. And we have Counselor Slinski.
All right. So I move to approve resolution 2025 dash oh five. The electric rate tariff update for 2025.
Excellent. We have a motion to approve. Looking for a second and we got Counselor Shakt.
I second the motion.
Motion is second. Uh, any more discussion? See none. Well, Ryan, please call for the question.
It passes 5-0.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, Matt. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, council. For this robust discussion. Um, moving on, or do you guys need a break? No. Moving on, item 16, uh, pre-approved accessory dwelling unit designs. And that would be Watkins.
Good evening, council. And presentation is sharing. Okay. We're going to talk about pre-approved accessory dwelling unit programs tonight. Um, we did have a work session. Meeting about this before, but for the benefit of anyone watching, I'm going to give a little bit of background just for a couple of minutes and some data before we. Dive into some recommendations and findings that we found in other places. So what are ADUs accessory dwelling units? They're smaller independent, um, uh, living units. That are, um, either attached to or separated from a main house. So they're only allowed in Glenwood in places that are, that have, um. Single family detached homes already. They require, uh, their own parking, off-street parking. And they're, when they're rented, they tend to be, um, naturally more affordable than single family homes or other kinds of products because they're. By definition, smaller. Um, there's a lot of benefits to, uh, residents as well as to the city for benefits. Um, such as extra income for homeowners when they rent them out long-term. They're not allowed to be short-term rented in Glenwood. It allows people to age in place or age with family members. They provide more housing just in general, and they do so with little impact to the surrounding, uh, neighborhood. So you can have. ADUs in the backyard because that's where we require them to be in most cases, uh, and they don't really impact neighborhood character. So in Glenwood, since 2021, we've permitted by building permit, 20 ADUs. And the vast majority of those have been attached ADUs. So you think basement remodels. Four of those have been freestanding ADUs and of those four, two of them have been garage ADU combos. Looking at the valuations that they give us with building permits, you can tell that. It's about 10 times, more than 10 times more expensive on a per square foot basis to build a detached ADU from, uh. Like a basement remodel. When we look at pre-approved ADU programs, there are a lot of cities that have programs like this. Um, Eugene, Denver. Summit County is the closest local example I've found. Many examples, um, many other programs that are out there, especially on the west coast. We've, we, and when I say we, I'm talking about that housing commission as well as staff. Have done some research on other existing programs that are out there and we've learned a lot of, I'll call them soft lessons of ways to. Try to make programs more, um, more effective and improve, improve the, the use rates of pre-approved plans. One that we found is that, um, flexibility is a big thing. Whenever you can. Offer some measure of flexibility with pre-approved plans, allow them to customize plans, that goes a long way with people. Doing things like having, um, at the same time as, as the pre-approved plans, a list of contractors that can help you. Build the ADUs is something that can improve use rates. Engaging with local builders when you're creating the pre-approved plans is something that helps a lot, both because they have. Good experience to give you, um, but they also, it kind of builds in a level of, uh. Of, uh, interest in using the plans, which is what we want. We want people to use the plans if we're going to create them. We've learned that limitations like deed restrictions can really hurt the use of pre-approved ADU plans. So any kind of limitation. About who can rent them, who can use them are something to say away from, um, if, uh, having more use is the goal. So, um, what we found in, in researching some of these other. Cities programs is that there, there is a bit of a concern that housing commission had about the level of use that some of them had. You know, you spend a certain amount of money to create these plans and in some cases, um, some cities have not had really impressive. Levels of use, number of people that have used the plans. In some cases, there are reasons for that, like the age of the programs, you know, they're just not very old, not very established. Other cases, um, require things like, um, deed restrictions. So that's something that gave housing commission pause when they made their recommendation that, um, we create a program like this. But we think with these lessons that we've learned, as well as the kind of, you know, um, mixing and matching of some of the options I'm going to get into and the. The relatively low level of commitment required with, with two, um, custom plans, that it's worth the expenditure. So the benefits of having a pre-approved ADU program where. A homeowner can go and say, I want to use this plan and looking at it on my computer and I'm going to do this. It's free to me. I have this plan. It's been approved by the building department. You have a more predictable and reliable process for the citizens. You lower their costs because they don't have the, the fees, uh, for an architect and their engineering fees are lower. You have a faster and more reliable timeline, um, when you are wanting to build your ADU. They can be lower construction costs too. And when we have pre-approved ADU, uh, plans, um, we can. We can go out and find designs that we think fit Glenwood and the designs that we want to see when we walk around our neighborhoods. You can also have buy-in from local builders. A pre-approved ADU plan also would meet some of the, um, goals of our comprehensive plan that I'm going to mention. Just in general, we say in our comprehensive plan, if we want to encourage accessory dwelling units, I think it checks that box. We want it to consider policy changes to increase ADUs. We want to address barriers to ADUs and consider changes to increase ADUs, um, as part of a housing strategy. We want to increase housing density, which ADUs help a little bit toward. And we also want to provide a diversity of housing types, which ADUs are part of. So here's a, uh, what I would think of as a menu of options, uh, for pre-approved ADU products. Um, and I've also organized this by what's most expensive at the top. And least expensive at the bottom and where you have the most control over what the end product is at the top, least at the bottom. By control over end product, I mean what it looks like, but also other kind of more intangible things like how difficult is it to build? How expensive is it to build? When you have more control over the design, when you have custom construction ready designs, for example. You can make that part of your program, part of your goals when you're designing these. Some of the other menu options though, could be just creating conceptual designs for ADUs. So that's not something that's construction ready, but could be taken to become construction ready. We could look at licensing existing designs, um, you know, like other cities, counties like Summit County has, um. Designs that, that might look nice to you, to you all. Um, and we have explored that a little bit. Um, we think the, the cost. In the Summit County, as an example, be about $15,000 to license those per plan. And then we have modular products, which we talked a good amount about at the work session. Modular from companies, you don't get a ton of choice about how to customize it. Sometimes they allow a certain amount of. Customization alterations with the exterior, um, but less than with the other options probably. And so those are be, that's a, a free option to the city generally. And so those are be, that's a free option to the city generally. We can link to their. Their, the company's website. It'll be a staff cost to review it against our building code to make sure it works, and then we could have it. I should note also with modular, since there's a lot of interest in that, it's, it's. Not every site in town could have a modular product for a variety of reasons, but one is simply just the kind of logistics of getting it there. You know, if you're on a small street and a crane, can you set up a crane to get it in there? It kind of depends on the site layout. So giving you a lot of words, and I just always like to end with a picture. This is from Seattle's pre-approved ADU program. This is. A photo of a constructed ADU over garage. Seattle is one of the cities that we looked at that has really a whole lot of plans. So with that, happy to take any questions.
Uh, thank you, Watkins. Back to council for questions. We'll start with councillor Shakter.
Just clarification, I didn't either listen or hear well enough. You mentioned specifically Summit County's pre-approved plans. And your estimate of cost per plan was how much?
And this is the cost to license the plans from them. So if we wanted to take their plan and use it, around fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, one five, per plan.
Correct.
And have you had a chance to look at those plans to see? How much work it would take to fit our code of needs, or do they look shelf-ready to you at this point? Do you know?
They look like they could be shelf-ready. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Zalinski.
Similar question. Was that fifteen thousand? To lease them for infinity, or is that a per-use?
That's a great, great question, because there, there is nuance with all of this, with any kind of ADU program. That would be to lease them for thirty uses. So that's. That's how these programs are structured a lot of times, because the, someone creates the plans and that person technically owns the plans, they lease it to you. So you have to negotiate how many, how many times that can be reused.
Got it. Okay. And we've had twenty-one? Since twenty-one? What was the numbers again?
Twenty total.
Twenty total since twenty-one. So, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to Watkins? I heard the word free. And I think that's, you said that was the pre-built, pre-built stuff? What would it, what would it take to move forward with that?
I think just direction from you all, and then research to find products that look like they would work. And then us working with a company to get those plans so that our building department can review them.
And vet the company and all that kind of stuff. The other thing that just jumped in my mind is it's fifteen thousand dollars to purchase a thirty-use plan. Would, would we pass that cost on per-use, or would we just say this is what we offer?
So these are all options in front of us, and many cities do have. Do, do you have some cost that they pass on to customers? Some cities like Eugene have a hybrid where they have one plan that's free and then others cost five hundred dollars. So that's kind of up to us. I, I, our recommendation is to have it be free to the customer just to, because what we're trying to do is eliminate one of the barriers. So that's maybe the best way to. Free is a good word, right?
Free is a great word. Well, it depends. But yes, it's generally okay. Thank you, Watkins. Councillor Shakter.
Well, if I may. I would like to kind of summarize what I heard going forward. Is that okay to?
Yeah, we still got the public, but yes.
Oh, should we do that first?
Yeah, I think we should do that. We'll do that first, unless councillor Zalinski has another question.
I do.
Please.
So. Do you envision it would be beneficial to say we started with the low-hanging fruit, which is the modular options that. You know, just require kind of a commitment and some little research. Looking towards maybe like implementing the plans. As we kind of move forward, is that beneficial, or is, does it, is it better to have the whole program in place before we like open the door on it?
I would say if, if money were no objects, the best thing for us to do would be to start with creating some custom plans, create a bunch of custom plans so that people have lots of options. Money is obviously important. So, you know, it's kind of just weighing the cost and benefit, which is why I want to. Highlight and not hide the fact that some of these programs in other cities don't have super impressive use rates.
Right.
Don't know how that would be in Glenwood. You know, we have a lot of pent-up demand for housing, so maybe it would be different here, but that's difficult to predict. So. I see nothing wrong with at least doing some modular products this way. And then I think it's up to you all to. Decide whether the cost is worth it to do other options.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no more questions right now, we'll, I'll put, thank you, Watkins. We'll open it to the public, see if we have any comments on this. Anybody here that'd like to come forward? Anybody online? No, we'll see none. We'll close the public portion, bring it back to. Council for some sort of a direction. And that would be councillor Shakter.
Thank you. And first of all, I've been. Kind of the almost firsthand witness to the amount of work and energy that's gone into this, and it's been a lot. By both staff and the commission, and it's greatly appreciated. The workshop kind of led to slight twists and turns from that, but that doesn't discount the amount of work that's gone into this. So what I've heard. From staff, from the commission and from the workshop, I would summarize as follows to. Give staff and the Housing Commission permission to, and encouragement to proceed. Because as Watkins said, it fits with our comp plan and the benefits for ADUs are valid. I would put an emphasis, encourage an emphasis primarily initially.
Sorry, Sumner, is this a motion?
No, this, none of this is a motion. This is a general recommendation. At this point, direction to. Subject to approval here, to focus on the modular ADUs. And with that. An R, come up to us with an RFQ, which you can do in-house. Any code design and adjustments you'd recommend, so it makes it easier for these to fit into our neighborhoods and into our code. To. Come up with any recommendations for, if appropriate, for. Tiered assistance with deed restrictions if we want them. And to come to us with an implementation type of pilot and a funding request. I think those are the things that I heard of workshop. There was some resistance to stick build, partly because of. The national and local, local market conditions. Our local market conditions are pretty unusual anyway. Nevertheless. If the commission and staff, in addition to the modular emphasis, said, hey, we still think. It's worthy of a pilot to have some pre-approved designs. That are economical, such as buying a couple from Summit County, because as you said, more choice is better. I would, I would be open to that proposal as well, and I would encourage you coming back with. A fine-to proposal on those guidelines, at least that's what I've heard. And that's all I have for now. And a thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, let's see if we all heard it that way. Any other? Any other direction discussion, anything like that? I, I think you hit the nail on the head, to be honest. So with that, I'm actually entertaining a motion to move forward with, with this direction. Councillor Zalinski.
So moved.
Based on his comments. Excellent, excellent. Can I get a second? Councillor Sims.
I will second that.
Excellent motion and second to move forward with this. It's, it's on the record. It's on the record. Whatever Sumner or councillor Shakter very nicely stated, I think is what we're all behind. Anyway, we have motion and a second to move forward with the pre-approved accessory dwelling unit designs. Call for the question.
It passes five zero.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Thanks, Watkins.
I think we're in good shape. I just want to check with Watkins and Hannah to make sure you guys feel like you've got the direction that you need. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, nodding is good, I guess. Yes, okay. Okay, moving on to item seventeen, ordinance twenty twenty five oh seven, code amendment section oh six oh. Construction building codes related to residential fire sprinkler regulations. And are we starting out with Hannah, community development director? Not here.
Good evening again. Hannah Klausman, Community and Economic Development Director. Brief slideshow for you on this, and also Robin Pitt, our fire marshal, is here to help me out with this topic. So we are looking at a code amendment for ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero seven related to changing our fire sprinkler requirements in our adopted building code. Just quick background, this was something that was adopted March twenty twenty-two. That changed the fire sprinkler requirements, adopting regulations that required one and two family dwellings to install automatic fire sprinkler systems. That's when that occurred. So we've been operating under that scenario for a couple of years, and we've received feedback from the public as well as council. That this may be something we need to take a closer look at to see that it's functioning with a balance of our housing priorities and our safety priorities. With that in mind, we're back before you tonight. We had a meeting with our planning and zoning commission to offer some insight, and then we also had a work session with council at your last meeting. To drill into what you wanted to see in this. So we hope that we've brought back something that meets a little bit in the middle. This has been. Discussed with Robin, our fire marshal, as well as Victor, our building official, who was not able to be here, as he's in Denver for training right now. One of the largest components that you'll see in your staff report is the municipal comparison that we did. So this was a big component when you look around at sixteen other jurisdictions and what they're doing, and you realize that you're in a small section of that. So we did have quite a few of those jurisdictions that amended this section as well of their building code. To, there's kind of a scale of what was adopted there. Some amended it to delete it entirely, so that one and two family dwellings aren't required. And then quite a few amended it to say that it's only required in certain circumstances. So. The three of us got together to try and look at those circumstances to see which ones. We could get behind and best adopt for Glenwood. So this is the list of jurisdictions that amended, but still kept some sort of requirement. You'll see there's design components there. There's also size components and some other firewall-related items that people have adopted. So that it's not a requirement for every scenario, but in scenarios that call for it. This is just the rest of that municipal comparison. So you have some of those jurisdictions, Silt, Eagle County, Garfield County. That deleted that section entirely. So it is not required for one and two family dwellings. And then we are in the as-written section currently with Snowmass, Vale, and Avon. So we're in the as-written that it does currently require one and two family dwellings, which we're looking at possibly amending tonight with your feedback. And Aspen is in a category all to itself at the bottom. So what we're proposing tonight, and I'm going to keep this brief so that you guys can just ask questions of myself and Robin of where we landed. Ours is going to be big. It's probably the most comprehensive amendment of that sixteen jurisdiction list, but we're the prom queen, I've been told. So why not? So we are, as written for us that we're proposing, one and two family dwelling automatic fire systems shall be installed. In one and two family dwellings when, and this is the bullet list that we came up with, when the dwelling has more than two thousand square feet. Also, when the dwelling is unprotected, floor eye joists in unfinished basement or crawl space designed for storage. Crawl spaces with more than thirty-six inches in height will be deferred to our building official. These are very specific, I know, but we can talk more about them of why. And then also the last bullet point there, new buildings in a location difficult to access as determined by your fire code official. So we really tried to pull in some of these things to allow for those circumstances when it may very well be. More appropriate to have that fire sprinkler in place than not, trying to hit the middle ground. And finally. Based on your feedback at the last work session, we included an exception for accessory dwelling units. And additions or alterations to existing buildings that are not already provided with a sprinkler system. That exception for the additions is what we currently have as an exception. So we would be adding the accessory dwelling unit to that. I do just want to throw in that we discussed the incentive alternative. So if that is a route that you want to go down or package together, that is something that we can continue to look at and, and bring back a program. So we, we talked about possible revolving loan funds for single-family dwellings. Accessory dwelling units. You guys didn't have too much on the duplex side that you wanted to extend that to. And then on the ADU side, grant funds possibly to cover the cost of fire sprinkler systems. In exchange for entering into our voluntary deed restriction program. And I believe that is the end of what I have. So I will turn it over to questions from you. For myself or Robin.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Back to us for questions to staff. We'll start with councillor Wymer.
My first question, Hannah, would be, how are you so good? Because I think it's perfect. You, both you and Rob, just amazing. Quite, quite seriously, I think for me, it's written, it's written just about perfectly. Should the one word be changed from floor to ceiling? Dwellings with unprotected ceiling eye joists in unfinished basements.
I will confirm that with my building official.
It makes more sense to me if it's, the word is ceiling.
That is how it was written.
You're in the basement, you want drywall up here, right?
If that is a Scribner's error, we can correct it without.
Yeah, without having to.
Without having to come back.
Yeah, okay. That was honestly the only thing. Otherwise, well, you know.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I guess I have a quick question for him. When you say, yeah, you, you like what you saw, do you mean the bullets or the second page? Or both of them together, or just one or the other?
Oh, the bullets.
The bullets. Excellent. Thank you. Just clarification. Any other questions to staff? No, see none. Thanks, guys. Let's open it to the public. Anybody here that'd like to comment, please come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city or not. And you get three minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Danielle. One, I have a question, because I'm, this is very new for us. We're in the process of trying to build an ADU. And can't get past the permitting stage. And so when we found out about this in January, we. Were very confused as to, yes, we're supposed to know we're putting this in, or no, we're. It's an exception. So now I'm really confused. I'm wondering if anybody can explain, sorry, explain that to me.
Okay, thank you.
I, I honestly can't go further without.
No, okay. That sounds good. Let's, let's get, let's get it, let's get it answered and we'll see.
So for accessory dwelling units, this would be an exception. And what that means is an accessory dwelling would not be required to install an automatic fire sprinkler system.
Okay. Is it currently required?
Please, please ask us and then we'll refer. Yeah, that's just how it works.
Currently required, yes, for an accessory dwelling unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, two minutes, anything else?
So tonight, that means that it's currently required. With this, there could be potential for it to not be required.
Should, should we approve this tonight for two?
Two readings.
To the bullets, it will, it will go into a process of two readings and within thirty days?
Basically, within twenty-eight to thirty days.
It'll be in effect. It'll be in effect, yes.
So I guess with the way it currently stands, it makes it very. Difficult for us to build an ADU. Because of how much more it will cost just for that. Our proposal is a detached. In the backyard of my parents' property. And it's interesting to me to have to put in a sprinkler system in a thousand square feet that's not attached to anything else. And has already been clear-cut around, which I also find interesting was on the fire collaboration and South Bridge, lots of other. Issues dealing with fire mitigation. And so I understand the purpose of it. But in the same sense, the way it's currently written is. Difficult for me to understand when our neighbors who have houses. Difficult for me to understand when our neighbors who have houses that have been established for years have trees over their roofs. And that's not being considered as a potential mitigation, but. A new place. Built that we know is going to be following the codes in today's world and not in nineteen sixty. Has to have more fire protection than it's trying to. Make it better for all of our community that is already well-established. That makes sense. Um, so I guess I am in support of the exemption. For ADUs so that we could hopefully move forward with getting approved for our ADU. Um, but we didn't even know this harsh portion existed until January. And that really changes our plan if we can even do it. So.
All right, thank you for your comments. Um, anybody else in the public? Oh, I see a hand. I see a hand online. Uh, Mark Noel, Noel. Um, please, can we, can we let him?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. You, Mark, you got, thanks for being here. You got three minutes.
Sure. Uh, this is Mark Noel. I'm a local architect here in Glenwood Springs. I really have a, I guess, a clarification. Question with the bullet points. I'm assuming that it means that any one of those bullet points, if it were. Um, relative to your ADU, then you, you know, if it was. As, as, as less as one of those, not that all of them had to be. If, if any one of those. Uh, qualifiers happen, then you would have to do sprinklers, and I'm, I'm looking for clarification on that, and then my. My comment comes down to cost, and, and what I'm encountering with clients. Is that the city of Glenwood Springs is asking for higher density and looking for. Installation of ADUs so that we can have uh, more spaces available for people to live and for renters, et cetera. Um, but the, the fire sprinkler issue, and I, I understand the, the fire issue is major, but there's a, a big cost factor to that. And oftentimes, that can be twenty to forty thousand dollars to fire sprinkler a um, a unit. And that might be just enough to push it over the edge where people say, you know, I, I could afford to do this, but by putting that in. Uh, I'd, I'd rather not do it, and so my. Uh, request would be that there is an exemption for ADUs and uh, for having them be sprinkled. That's it.
All right, thank you uh, for your comments. I'm gonna refer to Hannah on uh, some of those hopefully answers.
Yes, for clarification on that, he is correct. Any one of those bullet points is a scenario that would require the fire sprinkler system to be installed. But it, you don't have to meet all of them. So if your house is over two thousand square feet, yes, period. If you have ceiling or floor joists, which we will confirm that scenario, if you have that bullet point, then it is required. If your new build is determined to be in a challenging place to access from our Fire Marshal, Robin Pitt. That may require a fire sprinkler system, but not all of them together.
Right, okay, thank you. Excellent. Anybody else uh, on, online or here that would like to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name, and whether you live in the city or not.
Okay, and I live in the city, and we're trying to do the ADU. I do have the question on the third bullet with, we've talked about the Fire Marshal.
Could you just address the question to us, and then we'll?
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I don't understand that. Do we have the Fire Marshal come out and tell us if we meet that requirement, or we don't meet it? So that we know.
Okay, clarification. Hannah, please.
Um, so when we get a building permit in for an ADU or a single-family home, our Fire Marshal is part of our review committee. So he'd be reviewing that, and in the process where we provide comments um, on that build, we would certainly be informing at that time. That would be on the latter half. Normally, we, that would be something that we start looking at as soon as someone comes in and has like a pre-application meeting. With us or meets with staff to decide what they're doing, and we would pitch that over to our Fire Marshal to look at what that access is entailing. Um, and make that call early on so that they're aware of it.
Sounds good. Does that answer your question, I hope?
So I guess right now where we're at with our application.
Please come back to the podium.
Be able to know if we meet that or not.
Correct.
Because I know the permit part, part of the permit part has been approved. So that would tell me at this point with what Hannah said, that the Fire Marshal has already looked at that.
Hannah?
One more point of clarification.
Yeah.
So those bullet points stipulate which scenario it is required. The exception comes afterwards, and with all exceptions, you're exempting that whole section. So ADUs and additions do not have to pay attention to what is above the exception, which is all of those building points. She is proposing an ADU, so that challenging access point does not apply.
Right, because it's an exception.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, excellent. Everybody's clear. Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, no? Okay. Thank you, Hannah. Thanks, public. Is anybody else in the public here that'd like to say anything? I'll see none, we'll, oh. Oh, he had, left it up, yeah. Um, excellent, we'll close the public portion, we'll bring it back to council, uh, item seventeen, ordinance twenty twenty five oh seven for a motion. And Counselor Wymer.
So, Hattie, I'm glad you and your daughter came tonight. This was an important part of your guys' process to hear this out. We are trying to make ADUs easier, right? And, and for what it's worth, right? We're chipping away at it. These are regulations that we inherited from higher. And so what you can see up there on one of Hannah's earlier slides, how have other local jurisdictions reacted? To this on higher change, right? This is how we're reacting to it, right? We're, we're deciding to do X, Y, and Z, and ADUs. That fit this mold are accepted, right? So, so it wasn't, and then it was, and now it won't be again if it passes tonight. It's just how. Local councils have to act to be able to react to these things that get, that get pushed on us. So, so with that being said, uh, I move to uh, uh, approve. Ordinance twenty twenty five oh seven, code amendment section zero six zero. Construction building codes related to residential fire sprinkler regulations as presented.
Excellent, we have a motion to approve. Counselor Wymer, uh, Counselor Solinsky, please.
I second.
And a second from Counselor Solinsky. Excellent. Any, any other discussion? Oh, or question? Uh, Counselor Shaktar.
One point of clarification for you or Robin. How, if at all, do those exceptions apply if it's, if it's a new construction? Or an add-on over a garage? What? Is it still exempted because it's an ADU, or what happens with a garage ADU construction?
So in that case, it would be exempted on both accounts, uh, because it's an ADU, and also because it's an addition. To an existing building.
Thank you.
That was easy. Uh, Counselor Solinsky.
So we already have in building code, um, things established in place that, you know, account for the safety of, of exits and things like that. Um, correct.
We do.
So, so even if it's above the garage, you're already establishing that there's safe egress to get out in an emergency.
Yes, in our building code, there are strict requirements for egress. Um, so bedrooms require a.
Thank you. Yeah, that's. And um, oh shoot, I lost my train of thought. Um, oh, is there a site visit on things like that? Or like a, there's like a, I guess like a final inspection for a CO on a?
Yes, so part of our building permit process, when a building permit is issued, there's a series of inspections depending on the type of building permit. Um, and Robin and his team also have requirements to go and inspect and sign off on the final product. To make sure that it's meeting um, our requirements and also fire code requirements that apply.
Still like the smoke detectors and all those.
Yep.
Additional.
Perfect. All right, are we at comments?
Are you good?
Yep, are we at comments yet, or?
Yeah, I was there. You, you wanna say more?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Any other discussion? See none, I'll call for the question.
It's unanimous five zero.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Hannah and Robin. Thanks for coming forward tonight. I hope this helps in your process and uh. Look forward to your ADU, so. Excellent. Well, this concludes our actions and our presentations for this evening. Uh, we're going to item eighteen on the list, and this is council comment, and instead of just pushing your button, I'm gonna call on you, and you say yes or no. Counselor Solinsky. Go.
Right, so um, couple of things. One, I wanted to briefly mention that um. Our River Commission is going to have a kind of low-key, early spring, kind of pre-spring runoff, river cleanup. Uh, April twenty-sixth, and the intent of this is to be able to take advantage of. Uh, people who, bedrock guides and fly fishing guides who. Aren't, for you, they're too busy working to take advantage of the big river fest, river cleanup, so this is kind of just like a small-scale river cleanup. If anyone is so inclined, um, there's an opportunity there. And. That's all I got right now. Um, I also wanted to just bring up. Um, I guess reiterate, we heard that there's a rumor about why we have the water rate increases. And I think that the coolest thing that I've heard about this is we've identified a lot of waste. Um, anecdotally, I have a commercial building downtown. And I saw a crazy jump in my water bill, and so it inspired me to go and figure out why. And I had a leaky toilet, and I was using a ridiculous amounts of water unintentionally, and the tenant didn't tell me, and, you know, we just. Kind of were carrying on, and so there are some benefits to this that. As frustrating as it is and as punitive as it might feel, we're actually being really good stewards of our water resources by doing this, and um. I encourage anybody that has questions about their water bill to reach out to the department so that they can clarify. And make sure that they're using the right-sized meters and everything else that is gonna make it as efficient and functional. For them as possible.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Sims. Thank you, Counselor Shaktar.
Right.
And Counselor Wymer?
Nothing.
Excellent, and I myself have also nothing. From, yeah, I didn't write anything down, so nothing. I know. Moves us on to uh, city administration. We'll start with Steve Boyd, please.
I'm good. Gonna be easy. Call Hannah.
I don't have anything.
Also, nothing. I don't know if we had any correspondence. I don't think, nothing, we're, we'll stay the course. Uh, any um, announcement of a social event for tonight? Sounds like we're passing tonight. Not going anywhere. With that, I am entertaining a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Don't move.
Yeah, I know.
So move.
Okay, and, looking for a sec. Can you do the microphone? Sorry.
Second.
And a second motion, and a second to adjourn. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All passed unanimously. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Meeting is adjourned.